Good morning and welcome to the Cook County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting on a nonregular day. It is May 3rd, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under the God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Any adjustments to the agenda?
I have one. A resolution to accept airport entitlement funds from the Higbee Airport.
We will add that as D under Jeff, and it will be Jeff and Brady. Anything else? Can I get a motion to accept?
Motion to accept the agenda as amended.
I'll second it. Any further discussion? Any opposition? All in favor?
Aye.
We have public comment, and Julie gave us a lovely 45-minute public comment session here.
Forty-five minutes?
Jesus is talking to us through the light system right now, so we'll listen. That'll be our public comment for this morning.
Every time that happens, the camera goes on.
Oh.
Because the camera's plugged into the wall over there.
Of course it is.
Questioning what happened during that edited portion.
Yeah, it's the voices from the other side are talking to us through the lighting, so.
Was your camera off now?
Jeff, you're gonna get a lot of emails about your board commissioner losing her mind, talking to the lights. All right, no public comment. So consent agenda, we just have claims on there. Would anyone like to pull that one item?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Okay. Want to get a second?
Second.
We would go with Storley on that one. Any opposition? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Jeff?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And the disruption to the electrical system means that I don't have access to Wi-Fi, so I'm gonna have to work off of my short copy. But the first item is, thank you, is Schoolhouse Road issue, and we had conferred with Attorney Hickon and contacted Byers-Harren about the simplest way to accomplish what we want to accomplish. And generally, what we want to accomplish, we had a conversation about snow plowing and the old Schoolhouse Road versus the new County Road 55. The recommendation of our highway engineer is that we abandon the old Schoolhouse Road in favor of the new County Road 55. And the simplest legal way to do that, because we can't find documentation that we vacated the old road, is simply if we own all of it, then we don't have to vacate it. It is all the same thing, and it's right-of-way. So the first step in the process is that Steve Carlson is amenable to selling that triangular section, so that we would own County Road 55, the triangular section, and what used to be Schoolhouse Road, and that would all be just right-of-way, owned by the So the second portions, the portions after the acquisition of that land would be, we'd have, we'd contact the property owners in that area, we'd work with them to make sure that they had adequate access, we'd work with them to provide that access. But the first step in this process is simply to move to accept the purchase agreement so that we can go forward with this. This is consistent with right-of-way program that Dave has been talking about recently. How do we have the right-of-way to maintain the roads that we need to do this? And it would be within this year's budget of right-of-way to accomplish this?
The right-of-way acquisition?
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
You want to talk about it?
It sounds like Jeff kind of covered it all, but, you know, we'll work with them, you know, whatever it takes to get them the access, we'll do that. I think we can hopefully meet everybody's goals at the same time, so.
Well, you have the luxury or the disadvantage of having one of those members of that road as your employee, so.
Yeah, I'm not sure which that is.
But it helps.
So yeah, so hopefully we'll be relying on Jeff a little bit as when we're talking on that to hopefully be kind of the.
Yeah, the notifications and the, and the, it won't be public comment, but the notifications and the affected owners, landowners' comment will be managed, and we'll make sure that everybody is aware of the plans, has opportunity to comment. There's a few options, but looking at safety concerns, the right way to do this, the engineer's estimate to eliminate the old County Road and use County Road 55 as the point of entry is the best route to go. The purchase price of $4,800 represents, does not represent all of Mr. Carlson's fees into this, it represents essentially what he can document as far as purchase price and legal fees in getting title work done.
Okay. We'll start with discussion. Commissioner Moore?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My only question, I guess, would be for you. Is your district, correct, have you spoken with the affected property owners in this?
This has been a discussion since before I got elected, and if you're not aware, this is my fourth year. It's been a discussion probably before that. It's gone through a lot of changes and ups and downs, and this was kind of an idea that Mr. Carlson had brought forward, but having something moved forward as one resident's idea who doesn't use those two roads doesn't make it helpful. It's much more helpful to have this in the hands of the county and my highway engineer, and have him do it in the best, safest, most convenient way. Some of them are gonna be okay, some of them are not gonna be okay. They're already responsible for plowing to a certain area and getting in and out, and if this helps every resident, there's about six residents in that section, but right now it's been like the Hatfields and the McCoys over there, and who does what, and who goes where, and it, and as you all know, it was to the point of someone digging material out of the ditch and putting it into the road to direct traffic themselves. And so, we're gonna have bumps in the road, and we're gonna figure it out. I have the utmost confidence that Dave and Jeff are gonna make sure that this is the best situation for everybody in that section. Am I nervous? A little bit, because we're digging up old wounds again, but Dave knows how to deal with the situation, and so he's gonna have to deal with his employee, too.
Yeah. I think any of the residents that I've ever dealt with, with me as doing driveways, you know, whether it's reconstructs or constructions or anything like that, we leave the driveways way better than they found them.
Yeah.
An example would be the ditching we did on the gun plant up just before the cutoff road, the second cutoff road. That driveway's 100 times better than it ever was, and because that's the way we leave it, that's something I believe in. So hopefully, if we can get everybody to kind of realize that there's goals that everybody wants to hit and things like that, they'll be very happy with what.
This is an opportunity for a big improvement.
Yeah, they'll be very happy with what we left with, so.
Yeah.
And Madam Chair, I'd just make one more comment. I have, I did talk with Mr. Carlson last week, and he is, if the board approves this purchase agreement, he will sign it happily.
Okay.
So that really gets, then we have the authority to go forward with the rest of the property owners involved and make the corrections that need to be made, work with them and have the conversation, but this is the only thing, this is the only thing in the way of us accomplishing the elimination of the old road and the duplication of providing services on the new road and the old road.
And in the end, this is gonna save us money, because we have a road that we don't know who owns, that we are.
Maintaining.
Maintaining. It's two roads, and it is, it is a little dangerous there.
Yeah. Yeah, it's definitely, the way they enter and exit off that road is not anywhere near ideal. So yeah, it'll be, it'll be much safer, it'll guarantee it'll be much safer than what the situation is now, so.
Any more questions, Madam Chair? So then, so then it'll be a maintained as a normal County Road.
Because we'll own that angle.
Yeah, that'll just be right-of-way.
Yep.
Seems like a good solution.
Commissioner Gamble?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question would just be, what was the point that brought this up at this, at this point? In other words, what was the impetus for resurrect this?
Years of conversation, and how do we fix it? I mean.
I mean, I know we've had discussions and things, I'm just wondering how it came up at this point.
Commissioner, Commissioner, I could answer that, Madam Chair. After the conversation that we had regarding the snow plowing and the continuation of services last fall, I was basically directed to work with Attorney Hickon and come up with the steps it would take to solve this. So we walked through the process of looking for documents where we had vacated the road. We looked at all of the, all of the options that Dave had provided for us, is what his available options were, and then essentially, we struck across this thing that if we just treat it all as right-of-way, if we own it all, then we don't have to vacate the road. We can, so the simplest legal process was this. And Attorney Hickon asked me to work with Byers-Harren to come up with the paperwork to make that happen, and I just got that about two weeks ago. So confirmed with Steve Carlson that he'd be amenable to the price, and so that's how we got to here, is we've been stepping through the process basically since December, when it came up again in public comment.
Madam Chair, and Jeff, and thank you for that, because from my standpoint, you know, we've had an issue come up, whether it's, you know, brought up to correspondence or somebody showing up public comment or whatever, but that's a, that's a good process in response to an issue that we continue to have to revisit. As far as the contract that has been drafted, in reviewing that, is there any, we're not talking large sum of money, but there are some things that are open-ended as to basically our responsibility ongoing if there's some cost to be incurred, and I guess that would just comfort level as to that contract and knowing what our final dollar amount would be. That has to do with, you know, title insurance and other issues.
Yeah, and the total amount that I got from Byers for his work to process this for us was under $2,000. So we've already spent half of that to get to this point, and I know his estimate to do this for us was under $2,000. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Storley?
Thank you, Madam Chair. While things do move slow here, it's a great accomplishment to get the road finally figured out, and it's a great accomplishment to keep Steve Carlson happy, because I do get calls, and I'm not even in his district, but he likes to talk.
I would say he hasn't called me on this issue recently, so it's a good sign.
Good point. Thank you.
Commissioner Severson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And so, just to clarify the point, Jeff, that you just made about the $2,000, that would be in addition. So we don't know what the final will be, but $4,800 is for sure the cost.
$4,800 is the purchase agreement that I'm asking the board authorize, and Steve has said he would be satisfied with, and.
And $2,000 would just be fees on top of that?
Would be the legal fees on top of that.
That's the question, as far as extra. And this, so this all just seems positive, 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 positive. I'm not seeing any downsides, because I probably wasn't part of the downsides that got us here. So what, I mean, what are the possible, you know, trouble shooter? What are the possible downsides?
The main downside is we don't like change.
That's right. I thought that that might be.
Yes, and when you're used to entering and exiting your driveway in a certain way or having certain conveniences, it's uncomfortable, and the unknown is uncomfortable, but I think taking a resident out of the equation who's trying to control that and putting it in the hands of our engineer is gonna make that less stressful.
Yeah.
Yeah. I hope so.
Taking that personality out of the equation, I hope, I believe will make a big difference.
And not that that person has a bad personality or that we have any problem with it, it's just easier when our highway engineer, who's capable, does that for us. Commissioner Gamble?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. And just a generic statement like a lot of other issues, when, when we have jurisdiction, it's easier to manage it. When we don't have jurisdiction, we have to manage more than just what we're supposed to be doing, so.
Right.
It's a healthy solution.
Yeah, this is a, one thing is, too, is this is an example of, one of the reasons I want to get started, I've talked to you guys a little bit about, and Jeff kind of did this a little bit already, but, the right-of-way, because our right-of-ways are a mess, and it just, there's, our road descriptions are a mess, our right-of-way, you know, when we've relocated roads we didn't properly vacate. And this is, this was relocated before 29, so, because we have a drawing in 1929 that shows the road in its current.
1929?
Yep.
So, yeah, we're just.
Not $2,000. No. Not in the future.
So, I mean, this is, and it's, you know, it's kind of the way they did stuff, but this is one of the reasons we gotta get, we've gotta get our right-of-ways in place, we've gotta get our road descriptions in place and accurate and more buttoned down, I guess would be the word I would use.
Well, and that was part of the feeling on the road, is that a person believed that their ownership on either side of the road meant that they had ownership to the middle of the road, which meant they owned the entire road, and so this makes it much more clear, I hope. Commissioner Moore?
Madam Chair, I'd make the motion that we approve the purchase agreement with, as presented to Steve Carlson for $4,800, in addition, additionally, the cost, legal cost to that transaction.
Second, Jeff. Commissioner Severson, seconds. Any further discussion? Any opposition? All in favor?
Aye.
And we'll know the fact in two weeks if there's six people running against me that are from that road. All right. Thank you, Dave. Jeff, benefit consultant agreement?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. And Commissioners, we have, I have been having conversation with the AT group basically since, since Amy left and COBRA administration fell into my responsibility. And I gave you some background material on the cost of noncompliance for COBRA, the statistics that 90% of employers are not in compliance with COBRA, and the AT group is a, is a group that specializes in nonprofit and governmental benefits administration. And their proposal, and they do things that other people don't do. They had an opportunity at the Northeast Service Cooperative to say, do you have somebody who you work with as a third-party COBRA administrator? And they don't have that relationship. And I've had conversations with Oaks, who's been providing our life insurance and long-term disability insurance programs, and they don't provide that. So basically, the AT group is, has kind of an overarching program whereby, for us naming them as agent on those kind of third-party benefits that we have, life insurance, long-term disability, dental plan, they will, this year, take on all of the reporting for us. They will actually take that reporting and transfer contract with a third-party administrator to do that reporting for us. They will also be our point of contact. So I know that Commissioner Storley had a meeting with Judy yesterday, and I know they made some progress as far as understanding her benefits, and Judy's gonna continue to be the point person for that, but the technical expert will be the AT group and their staff that they have to do this. The other, in 2017, I told them budget sensitivity, we don't really have anywhere to go with this in 2016, and they stepped to the plate, and I've worked with them before. They work with the school, they work with the city of Grand Marais. They, they are willing to take a chance on us if we're willing to lock in kind of for a three-year period of time that we work with them, that we wouldn't actually pay them anything until 2017. And the compensation that they're asking for is 1.5% of our healthcare premiums, which right now would be approximately $18,000 a year, is what our, what our numbers are. We, $18,000 a year is a family health plan and other associated taxes and benefits for an employee, without having any wages for a second employee. And one thing, we provide really good service, we provide an additional level of expertise that we don't currently have in working with the benefits that we have now. I have to nail somebody down with Minnesota Life, with Nationwide, with this, with that, I have to have all those contacts. Here, we'd have a single point of contact, and they would manage that for us. That's part of the service they provide. But the primary reason for wanting to do this is that the cost of having a COBRA claim or a continuation of benefits claim against an employer can reach hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars, very quickly. And this relationship will allow us to transfer that liability, and it'll take it, you know, we could, we could have Judy be the person that does that, and that's basically what she does, but then the county retains that liability. And if we, if we allow, work into this agreement, we transfer that liability, and it doesn't come back to us. If somebody has a claim, they have reinsurance to cover themselves, but continuation of benefits, basically, you not only have to notice the employee whose job changes, but you have to employ, you have to notice all the eligible family members of the employee. And the final thing that they, they said they would supply, and we're just dealing with this in the office now, is people who are retiring and working their way off of our plans onto a Medicare plan. And that is also not a straight path to manage from a benefits standpoint, and we would get all of these services for that 1.5% of our, of our health premiums. Plus, they're gonna help us negotiate the most effective healthcare premiums. We would very, 98% continue with Northeast Service Cooperative as our provider, but they would help us to manufacture with their, their understanding of local governments and the health plans that they have. How can we provide more cost-effective benefits that continue to provide the services and the benefit that our employees need? So that there's, there's a lot of room, there's, it's a big landscape out there, and they're more in a position to be, to be able to lead that conversation.
Okay. We'll start with discussion. Commissioner Severson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. It sounds like an excellent thing to get into. I don't see any downside to that. That $18,000 annually seems like just the risk and the services that they provide will easily make up for that. It also just tells me there's just a lot of room in the insurance industry for a lot of services, let's just say. The other, so the other question is, because reading the letter, it says, I mean, your proposal says that there won't be any fees payable until 2017, but will there be, it's not really clear in the letter that there won't be any fees generated in 2016 that might be payable in 2017?
There would not be.
It's not really clear.
What they're, what they're saying and they're asking is for us to name them as agent for these other benefits that we have. It's like if you, if you switch your car insurance.
Right.
Somebody sells you, and you say, yeah, I'll do that, I'll switch that.
So they're getting a percentage.
So they would, they would continue to take that percentage from that account going forward, and they would be responsible for noticing Oaks, who is our agent of record for those, for those things at this point.
Okay.
So we would be displacing somebody that we've, that we've worked with for a while. They're out of the cities, they've been good to work with, but it's.
This is.
But we get so much more with this because of the breadth of what they do. So they will get compensation if we, if we permit this, and they're proposing that they would, they would carry that for, same as, if, like I said, if you switch your auto insurance, your new agent will go in and send a letter to your old agent and say, this is my account now. And it's kind of the way that, that business works, but we would not have any out-of-pocket expense, and we would have the full breadth of services for the balance in 2016. They're proposing this would start as of May 1st, if the board were willing to move on.
May 1st, like, on Sunday?
Yep.
That's one out, one in 1929.
Yeah. The most recent, May 1st.
Thank you.
Commissioner Storley?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I missed the part about where COBRA liability was gonna be transferred to, if it was gonna be transferred.
It'd be transferred to the third party.
To them as a third party.
To the, to, through them, to an actual agency that would provide that notification.
Oh, okay.
So if we, if we agree to do this, we'll draft the documents, they'll be reviewed to make sure that it does effectively transfer that liability. And so essentially, what I'd be asking today would be for the approval of the board to go ahead and, and get that contract, and upon completion, and review by county attorney that we would sign that and have that start, so.
So it's kind of scary when you read 90% of employers are out of compliance with COBRA.
What's really scary is there's a little clause in there that not only is the employing agency liable, but individuals named with responsibility can also be liable for portions of this.
Yeah. Which seems like it'd be motivating enough to not be.
So I don't want, I don't want to be the signatory on those things.
No. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Gamble?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think this is, this is a significant decision, and I think that the, in evaluating a decision like this, it's a matter of evaluating both risk and cost and benefit. How we've been presently operating, we've had a, you know, a brief discussion about it today, but my preference is, given the significance of this, and I can, risk, cost, and benefit, is I would prefer to table it and have a more extensive discussion, because this is significant. It's changing providers, and it's looking at what, you know, again, what our benefit is, what our cost difference is. We certainly know that in the area of insurances, that negotiating competitive benefit at a reasonable cost is a big part of what we hope to do, but again, I think, I think this is, this is the first exposure to it, and given its significance, I would prefer that we would have, we would have opportunity to discuss this a little bit more. That's my opinion.
Commissioner Moore?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, Jeff, I have a few questions, too. I'm, I would, maybe I'm, my understanding is somewhat limited, so I like things simply, but side-by-side comparison of what our coverage is now, what our cost is now, what our liability is now, versus what we'll be getting, and it seems as though there will be an additional cost to the budget, you know, what is that beyond what we're paying now? I mean, I understand the logic as you present it, it does, it does sound reasonable, however, oftentimes, you know, I have stories in my head that I think everybody else knows what I've been thinking all along, and this is obviously something that you've been thinking about for quite some time, and I think it would be helpful, at least for me, to get me to the place you are. So I agree with Commissioner Gamble, it's, there's, I have too many unanswered questions to support it right now, not that I wouldn't, but I just need some more information.
Table to the last meeting in May.
Is there any downside for us to, what's, what's the risk at not acting immediately?
We won't start May 1st.
We won't start May 1st.
And then, and then so we have additional liability between?
We have, we have the continuing liability that we've had all along.
Right.
And Molly, does, you have a comment?
I was just gonna say, I don't think we should comment on what our liability is.
The liability will be unchanged.
There you go.
There you go. Yeah, I don't know if you, you like the motion, but I would, I would make the motion to table it until.
24th?
The 24th.
I can have, I believe I can take a shot at answering those questions. I might even be able to get Bill from the AT group up here to present that.
That'd be great, thank you.
Can I get a second, Commissioner Gamble? Okay. Commissioner Gamble, did you have a further comment?
I'm just gonna say that, that I think, again, you know, people digest information differently, and I agree, Commissioner Moore, is, you know, how, how we can better understand this, get to the place, I think that's a good phrasing of where you're at, but this is a significant decision. I think that, again, the risk, the cost, the benefit, seeing that side-by-side. The other thing is, is when you're negotiating, if, if there is a benefit relative to the increasing cost of benefits, and a percentage of that as a fee, that there, there might be opportunity to negotiate that as opposed to a fee added plus a percentage. That, that I do not know, but it's those kinds of things, I think, in evaluating a new direction that we should look at, and I think similar to our discussion on the Schoolhouse Road, we're looking at an opportunity maybe to create a better, you know, scenario, but at what cost overall, so.
Any further discussion? The motion is to table till the 24th. Any opposition? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Ms. Tevin?
And, Madam Chair Commissioners, we had a resignation submitted by Heidi Akins on April 22nd, and Sue didn't want to wait until the 17th to bring this to the board so that we could accept the resignation and move to fill the vacancy, due to the nature of that position and the fact that she's the only one doing it. I would make a comment that this position was reviewed by the Personnel Committee in September, October. It was approved, this, this position, description as it is, was approved by the board on 10/2015, so I believe it's still relevant and consistent with the balance of our social worker positions.
Okay, we'll start with discussion. Commissioner Moore? Commissioner Moore?
Yeah, I would support accepting the resignation, just with concern for losing another quality staff person. Hopefully, in going forward with our assessment of compensation, or, I mean, there's, and with the...
Staff development?
Staff development, human resource person that turnover goes slow. I mean, I see this as regrettable. And I agree with Jeff, that we review the position description. I don't think we need to take this back to the Personnel Committee again.
Commissioner Gamble?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I would agree with, you know, comments Commissioner Mo has made, that particularly in this position, have we seen, since we've been on the board, have we seen at least three? And it could be more that have left this position.
Social workers.
And, I mean, social workers, but in this area of the children. And so if we see a pattern that seems repetitive in the short term, then looking at the job description is one thing. Do we have that correct? Compensation is another. And I think our Public Health Human Services Director, this would be a discussion to have, to understand, is it the nature of the work that is being done? The competitive market, the lack of a pool that are trained, the financial...
Everything you just said.
Yeah. So that as a board, when we look at this, we don't have to continually, you know, see this. Plus, the people that have entered in in good faith and then find out it just doesn't work. Why isn't it working?
And Sue's brought this to us many, many times, and the comp study's going to help us immensely. And then, when the new director comes in, we're going to have to have a deeper conversation.
And I think that a lot of times with an exit interview, an exit interview will tell you if people are honest with you. They'll say, "Well, I don't get enough money to do this job," or "It's too stressful." In other words, exit interviews would be a piece of that puzzle to contribute to our understanding why people are leaving. And in some cases, it's, "Well, my family lives elsewhere and I'm positioned to open up." You can't do anything about that. But you can do something about other issues.
Depending on the day, she might say it's Pike Lake Road.
True.
This is not a schoolhouse room.
Yeah. Commissioner Storley?
I just add to, we need to look at all the angles of the job description and why.
Commissioner Severson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, I mean, I think Commissioner Gamble brings up a great point. The exit interview is really valuable, particularly in this case. So is that something that we do consistently, exit interviews? Is it part of our process? Will it be part of our process?
Yes, it will be part of the process.
Yeah.
My meeting this afternoon is, we're working on the implementation of the Cronos HRIS system. And we have built exit interviews into that so that we can systemize them and make them regular. But I can certainly, I can certainly work with Judy and have her put something together and do something informal. We, I think we have Heidi here for a couple more days. So, and I'm sure she'd be willing to give us some feedback, so. It will be normalized and part of the process, but I think there's time to capture that information here.
Commissioner Gamble?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just one other comment, you know, on various boards that we sit on, that we have administrators or people that are on those boards, that are in leadership positions that are retiring. And one of my questions has been, is there an exit interview? You know? And no. And if you've got somebody 30-some years, and you're not having an opportunity to sit down and talk to them and learn, you know, that is a huge lost resource.
I know we've had them.
Yeah.
And it depends on who's conducting it and what the questions are if you get the information that you need. So it's great that we're taking a step back and figuring out how we do that.
And the circumstances around the change.
Sure.
Can I get a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to accept the resignation of Heidi Akins effective May 6, and declare a vacancy for the position of Social Worker 1 in take children's services.
Commissioner Gamble, seconds. Any further discussion? Any opposition? All in favor?
Aye.
YMCA maintenance.
Thank you, Madam Chair Commissioners. And this is really, this is the result of a conversation that was one of the first weeks that I was here, when Commissioner Mo and Commissioner Severson and I went down to City Hall and had a conversation with Mike Roth. And we were talking about the agreements that we have in place for the continuation and the maintenance of the YMCA. And we've had some more conversations because we haven't gotten those contracts up to date. Attorney Hicken has been involved in bringing those up to date, getting some ideas and drafting some that will be coming before this board so we can take a look at them. We've got our relationship with the Y. We've got our relationship with the school. The school's got a relationship with the Y. There's joint powers with the city. It's a fairly complex system of contracts. But the general, the basic portions of that agreement is that initially, there was an operating deficit of $200,000 that the city and the county agreed to split, as far as support for the operation of that program. And then there was a conversation about rewarding, good budgeting and good management, that if the Y didn't use all $200,000 of that, that we would work into the contracts to allow them to set that money aside for additional capital purchases or programs, or have some flexibility with the balance of that money. And so that's really all that we've been talking about in this sense, is how do we draft those contracts to reflect that language? There's also, between the different contracts, there's different descriptions and calculations for how that dollar amount changes. You know, whether it's by, similar to the, one of the contracts refers to, has a similar mechanism to what we have with the library. That if there's a documented need, up to 5%, then it's kind of automatic. The other ones are not all consistent with that. So we need to be consistent with what that looks like. All of these, all of these questions will be incorporated into new draft documents and be available for the board to study and review before we need to move on them. I think there's two issues, is that they did have some money carryover from the maintenance fund this year. And so, at some point, there was conversation about a need for a piece of equipment, and I think some people were involved in an email about that. That's a really inefficient way to buy equipment, is to have a whole bunch of emails like that. So I'll make a recommendation at one of the next meetings on how to do that for this year. Or we'll determine how close we are to having contracts available for review. But one other item came up in the meantime, and that has been related to the overall cleanliness and maintenance of the facility. And part of the $100,000 that we pay goes to pay staff on YMCA's payroll for the custodial and maintenance of that facility. They have not had consistent staff, or they have not met consistent standards for the care and maintenance of that facility. So I've had conversations with Brian Silence and with Emily up at the Y, and talked about the possibility of adding staff at the county and reducing the amount of dollar support that we put in, that we would just, we would just provide that service and reduce our commitment to the overage, to that budget. And I guess what I'm really looking for today is just some general feedback on that. I would think if, we've looked at it, we've talked about it, it'd be a dollar-for-dollar thing right now. Our cost of supporting that operation would be roughly the same. And we would have the additional flexibility of, I would, we've talked about that person probably working a 4:00 PM, no, the same shift that Lindy works, so from 4:00 to midnight. So that they would, we would have an opportunity to also, if there were projects here, that person could work with Lindy. If there are projects up there, Lindy could work with that person. We would have, we would have some opportunity. So really, what I'm doing is just putting that new idea that we've talked about, on how we can more effectively care for that facility. And really, in the long run, and not even in the long run, manage the additional expense that we're having in maintenance projects. We're having to maintain things that shouldn't need maintenance to this point, because they have not received the care and attention that they need. And by having more direct control over that, I think we can increase the life expectancy of all that stuff.
Okay, we'll start with discussion. Commissioner Severson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Not only does it become a maintenance issue for the future, but it also is a customer satisfaction issue today. When you go in there at 6:00 a.m., the floors are wet. And actually, somebody just about wiped out in front of me the other day. So having the maintenance, we're in the maintenance and custodial business, and so it makes sense. That part makes total sense to me. The money part is a little confusing. Not between the county and the Y, but I'm just thinking on behalf of the city, that they look at that as a little weird. But I think it could be, I believe in the structure of it, that it could work out. I just really want and like the idea of the maintenance custodial piece being our responsibility versus their responsibility.
Okay, Commissioner Storley?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would agree with you, Jim. But that, I think, would work out better, provided that, then maybe they could also do things here, or sort of general. Except if they're working from 4:00 to midnight, they may not want to come to work here at 8:00 o'clock. So, you know, you'd have to work out something. But that would be the primary source, would be working at the Y as a custodian. Is that the idea?
Yeah. If we were to make a proposal, it would be to hire a custodian whose primary responsibility is at the Y Monday through Friday from 4:00 to midnight. Staff and volunteers would do the services over the course of the weekends. The amount of time that Jimmy and Troy are going up there to fix things that Lindy could do with her skill set during the time that she's...
Or that would not fail had they been maintained regularly.
Yep. Is where we would see the savings. And Commissioner Severson made a very good point in that public perception. And part of why I want somebody there from 4:00 to 8:00 is that, so that they would be seen. And from 8:00 to midnight, after the doors are closed, is plenty of time to do the floors and the work that needs to be done when there's no traffic.
Yeah. Thank you. Commissioner Gamble?
Thank you, Madam Chair. In our discussions, we had a joint meeting, you know, with all the various entities, the school and the Y and the county and the city. And in that discussion, we talked about the responsibility of maintenance. And I think we were under the impression that beginning something new, that we track and see how we're doing. And at that time, I don't believe Brian was actually tracking his time. And so we suggested, well, we're not going to learn what it's costing us, plus that's a hidden cost if it's not tracked. So we need to see costs for services we provide and for benefits that are provided by the Y to students. It should be charged as though we used, and that way we'll have an accurate representation. So when we look at this relative to the comment, you know, by Commissioner Severson as to how the city would look at this, if the city wants to take responsibility for the maintenance, that's fine. We know that we need to have maintenance, and it's part of the stewardship. Stewardship is also protecting your brand. And so if we make a commitment with taxpayer dollars that is a finite amount, $100,000, if we want to use that for maintenance because we feel that's a priority that needs to be, and it's a better investment of those dollars, and it's definitive in nature, I'm all for that. If we are not tracking our actual costs and we don't understand it, then when it comes to having a surplus at year-end, if we really haven't tracked costs, that's not a surplus. So all of those are the moving parts in making a decision as to where we go.
And I wouldn't say have added to the city, but what I would say is, this is an opportunity, if they have expertise and ability, that we open the door, that they have equal opportunity, if it works with our contract with us and with the Y, to take a portion of their funding and help us with this. I don't know that they will, but it's an opportunity. Right now, we're paying out-of-pocket above the $100, so.
Yeah. And, Madam Chair, we own the building.
Yeah. It's our responsibility.
And that's why it's, I don't think there'd be a difficulty in having that conversation, although it is a contractual relationship, so it does have to, the conversation has to be had.
And they're doing a better job of keeping track. It was really a few months to get that going, but I think they're pretty good on it now.
Yeah. And they asked Brian.
And I actually want to, I've asked Rena to work with me and Brian to come up with, you know, as much as MIS is really tracking their staff hours and the amount of time that they're using, I said, "We really need to apply that expertise." So the three of us are having a conversation about, can we do it with this existing system? Can we find something else? We really need to get a good handle on what we're, on how we're spending those resources within our maintenance department.
All right. Commissioner Mo?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Backing up a little bit to the incentive for the Y to stay within its $200,000 budget, I think that was an idea that I supported originally, in that because Jeff said we own the building. And so if we can create an incentive twofold for them to, for the Y to stay within or below its budget, but to then be able to use that additional money for investment in the capital, which in fact we own, would be of, I think, value to the county. And specific to this proposal for, I mean, the reality is, we're going to be cleaning and maintaining the facility anyway. And, you know, and it is a problem now. And so if we can take responsibility and do a better job at maintaining the facility that we own, just like maintaining any other investment that we have, I would support that.
And the problem, you know, is, again, we were hoping to have 200 people there. And our maintenance and our cleaning and our facility operations were based on that, and that was just blown out of the water within the first month. And so this is just, it's a continuation of growing pains. And so it's not that anybody failed at their job, or, but we're feeling it, and we need to do something about it. So we're glad you're there, and keep coming, and we're going to keep getting better. Commissioner Gamble?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I would say, similar to Public Health Human Services, where we see the amount of workload that are put on people, that because Brian and his, you know, work ethic and his, you know, commitment is willing to do it, we need to be sensitive. We can't take advantage of somebody that's willing to do that. It needs to be intentional so he can relax and know what he's responsible for. So that's an element that's a huge part of this. We can't just say, "Well, put it on him because he's willing and whatever," because we've got brownouts, and we've got a lot of other things that are coming up that he gets called on.
The only remaining question I have is, has this idea been floated to the Y?
Thank you, Commissioner. The answer to the question is yes. Emily is all in favor of this. However, we do have two contracts that we'd have to make sure that we've got pretty good agreement on before we could move.
Yeah.
And that would, hopefully, we could do that in the next couple of weeks and bring this back to the board and say, "We have consensus on these contracts. Everyone agrees with them." And then we could make a move that's going to change how the money moves. So I would say that we'd actually have something we'd want action on. I really just wanted to know. I knew where we were in our conversations about that support of the Y, but I really wanted to, I appreciate that everybody is invested in this process and understands our ownership of this building and need to take care of it. So I would just say I'd bring that back on the 24th as well and hope to have those contracts. Great, she's not going, no. So we should be okay to have those conversations and have those drafts available for the 24th.
So this is just the beginning of the conversation. And, you know, if any of you've got questions, please stop and talk to Jeff and get going on this. So Rodney, your timing's impeccable.
Agreed.
We're going to just take it off of us and put it on you. This is Rodney Roy from the airport. Morning.
Morning.
So tell us the magical thing you did at...
I bought a guy a drink, he got us $30,000.
That's a good investment. There's an annual event. Go ahead.
Minnesota Council of Airports is the name of the organization, and that's the governing body for all airport managers in the state. And we had a meeting a couple weeks ago, and it's just to educate us on many things, aviation. And the FAA is often there, so we can meet with them. It's kind of... It's kind of face-to-face time for people like us that are doing projects. It was discovered, actually Darren with RSNH, our engineering firm, said, you know, Hibbing isn't going to be able to use quite all of their entitlement money from a project that they had going. And entitlement money is the money that we get every year from the FAA. We can bank it for only three years, after that, you'll lose it if you aren't using it on a project. And that was the case with Hibbing, was they had $30,000 to spare in their AIP money that was going to expire shortly. And so I went over to the Hibbing Airport Manager and chatted with him, and he said, well, why don't I just transfer it to you, otherwise they lose it. So, so on a, on Darren's hunch, then we just got them to send us a letter that then you have to formally approve receiving those funds, so. So, that's the point of today, is you're just going to, you need to accept that money, unless you don't want it.
We'll start with discussion, Commissioner Mo.
Seems like a pretty easy yes. I'm thinking it might be.
Yeah.
Right? Maybe just tell us where it'll go. So, our next project that it can go to, because the runway project, that's all funded and spoken for, is the renovation of the of the terminal building.
Chairs.
Chairs, yeah. It's enough to do the furniture. There was motivation involved, yeah. So, that's where it'll go.
Commissioner Gamble?
Thank you, Madam Chair, just, I mean, that's great, and it it shows the value added for partnerships with people that you're working with.
Exactly.
When they're mindful and aware, not just doing their job, but they're looking to really help, you really appreciate that. It's interesting, just as an observation, that funds that are allocated, I know that you can swap out, as we have done, when somebody's not working on a project where they need those dollars when their time comes up. And then we reciprocate later on in a situation where we have monies that are going to expire, and we say, well, is there somebody else that could use those? It's interesting that that's allowed. It's it's monies that are applied for a similar project, it's just not within that particular, you know, jurisdiction or whatever. It's interesting that they allow it, it's great, but.
Yeah. It is interesting. It's their AIP funds, and their project literally didn't quite consume it, so.
Yeah, that's great.
And we did the same thing, if you recall, with Silver Bay, they received funds, but they were doing nothing, so we got all of their entitled funds.
Yeah, I remember that, but then when their project comes up, if we're in a.
Chances are from Silver Bay that won't happen. If there is chances from Hibbing, that it's a similar event in a few years.
If they have to fly in for coffee or something at our airport to connect it to the Hibbing, then the funds can be allocated.
Commissioner Starley?
Thank you, well, that's wonderful. I think we probably need a before and an after picture of the renovation of the actual room itself. Be fabulous, thank you for that.
We are planning on having a large open house after this is all done.
Commissioner Seabertson?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and that was a great idea, because you don't often think of taking pictures when it is the way it is, you know? So involved in plans to make it better.
We're going to do Duck Duck Greatuck with the duct taped chairs.
Very good, excellent. So, I just want to thank you for your work, and this is fabulous, and I would make the motion, but I, you know, is there anybody who had more of a activity that would like to make this motion?
I would love to make the motion to accept the money from the Hibbing Airport Authority in $30,000. Can I get a second, Commissioner Starley?
Madam Chair, just.
Yes, sir.
Just a note, in the, when I created the resolution, it it's resolved that the board chair coming out here can sign the agreement. We don't actually have the agreement yet.
So, I can't sign this, I was all excited.
Well, this is just our our resolution form, but there'll actually be an agreement with Hibbing, same as there was with Silver Bay. But this came up so fast that they just needed the resolution now, we couldn't wait till the next meeting.
Excellent. So, the motion is second, any further discussion? Any opposition? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thanks, Rodney.
You're welcome. Nice work. Maybe we want a drink, a little?
All right, so Commissioner reports, meetings to know what meeting updates. Anybody have any? Commissioner Seabertson?
I just wanted to, it's stated here at the bottom, the low adjourned, that there will be an Arts Advisory Committee meeting next May 11th at Voyager Brewing, and that sounds like very official and very serious, but it is, it's a sort of a celebratory meeting to inform people to, and actually to collect ideas and input from whoever attends so that we can move forward with the mission to really put some effort into the arts economy as a way of diversifying the economy in Cook County. There's been a lot of, a fair amount of effort that's gone into this over the years, but we're working with Arts Midwest this year on actually creating a roadmap for us to actually do this. So, the the March 11th meeting is really a gathering of people to get input and share ideas so we can move forward and make the roadmap better, stronger, with more buy-in. And there will be orders, so that, I mean, it's more like a party than a meeting, so I just wanted to let you know that it will be, so bring a party, yes.
Okay, Commissioner Starley?
Yes, on Friday, I attended a couple of workshops for the emergency management area, and the first workshop was really fascinating on infectious diseases, and she started off with measles, ended up with the Zika virus. She had a map that showed perhaps the mosquito would make it as far as Missouri. The next morning, they had a map on the news that it could make it to southern Minnesota. So, it's moving pretty fast, however, I don't think the mosquito is going to make it over our winter months if it ever makes it up this far. The other workshop I went to was two and a half hours of emerging elected officials, and it was, it really ducktailed with what we attended last fall with FEMA, but the lady from Thunder Bay had a lot of other points that I took notes on, and we'll share them when we need it.
Anyone else have any items to add? Commissioner Starley, you available for WTIP in the morning? Perfect. And Commissioner Seabertson did note that there may be a quorum of commissioners at Voyager Brewing on Thursday. Again, we will not be here next Tuesday because we will be at Breaking Through down in Beaver Bay, and that'll be a wonderful week for me talking about a depressing subject because I will be at Futures in St. Paul on Thursday and Friday, and the topic both days is sex trafficking and how it's affecting the state. So, that will be my depressing week next week. So, I'm going to lighten up my depressing week with my favorite part of the meeting. We're going to talk about our anniversaries, we have a huge list. A big, huge thank you to our department heads and our staff because we have some very, very long-term staff on this list. So, we will start with Will Sandstrom, who is now our chief deputy, 15 years at law enforcement. Jackie, our maintenance custodian, four years. Kyle Oberg, 11 years in IS. Allison here in four years in public health. Sarah Hadley takes our minutes, she's been here two years in public health. Elena Berg, five years in soil and water. Gary, who greets us at the door occasionally, seven years for law enforcement. And then Greg Thompson with the Highway Department. For those of you who are not sure who Greg is, he is the guy that always has a smile 10 feet wide in the grader, and a wave for everybody. 30 years is amazing. Little, yep. And then Rusty, who is, I think, takes care of your district.
Takes care of my road, yes.
Yes, 20 years for Rusty, we are very grateful. And then for law enforcement, we have Darcy, 18 years, and Darcy trained me in as a dispatcher along with Dolly, so appreciate that time. Paul Spry, 14 years at law enforcement. Leif Lundie, 18 years at our law enforcement. Sean Swerjen, 11 years with our Highway Department. And then Todd Smith, little light of sunshine over in our Assessor's Office, I get a lot of compliments on Todd, he's one year with us. Troy, you've all seen him out helping out and shining up that hallway for the art out there, he's our maintenance, one year. And Jason Hughes has completed his first year at Law Enforcement Center, he's also a grant portage officer. So, thank you to all of the staff. We have a lot of work here to fill out thank you cards. So, with that, can I get a motion to adjourn? Mr. Gamble? All right, thank you, guys.